Okay, I would like to call this regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education to order. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Iden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
Mrs. Carrier? Here. Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again officially, I want to thank everybody for coming. We appreciate the public attending meetings. We always encourage that. We're going to start out with the principal reports. Jeff Slattery, you are on top.
All right, good evening. A quick run through of some events that have been going on at Hicksville High School last month. First off, I want to go back to Tuesday, February 23rd. The class of 2022, they were administered the state-required junior ACT test. Mr. Mike Blue, of course, administers that test to our students, and we appreciate all the flexibility of our teaching staff. And again, this is required in every junior in the district that does take that test, and we do it off-campus. March 5th, 2021, I want to thank all of our teaching and administrative staff for their hard-working, conducting innovative interviews for Mrs. Leone's class. I know typically, we have a lot of people from the community come in and administer these interviews. This year because of COVID, at that point, we're not allowing visitors. We had to kind of be creative, but the kids did a great job. And again, I appreciate everything Mrs. Leone puts into that program, because I think it's an awesome opportunity for our students. Coronation, that occurred over the weekend of March 6th. And again, COVID-19, we had to make some adjustments to what we typically do. First off, the seniors did a great job, and they actually got to have kind of a unique experience also. Based on the regulations and recommendations of COVID, we were not allowed to have a typical coronation where the entire public was allowed to come in. And typically, we do this up at the Huber Opera House. Of course, the limited seating at the Huber and space, we decided to take advantage of our commons, and of course, our stage, which is much larger than the stage at Huber. And I want to thank Mr. Bassett and his staff for coming in, and they set up, we had up to 30%, I believe at that time, or excuse me, 25% of capacity could be in there. Every single senior student was allowed to have four tickets, and those were primarily to give to parents. And with that being said, we knew our students and our staff usually enjoyed coronation when I'm going to be able to attend. So again, unique experience was on Friday afternoon, we kind of did our first show, it was like a prep show, and all of our high school students and staff were able to see the coronation. And then, of course, Saturday was the coronation that was for the public. Again, I already thanked Eric Bassett. I also want to thank Joey Geiger and Amber Zachrich, because I know the amount of time and effort they put into that show. And again, it was a great show. March 9th, we had the APT interviews. Of course, these interviews take place during the spring, prior to the upcoming school year. And this year, we're actually in competition with Fairview and Antwerp for the programming. And I would like to say that Hicksville students earned six of the eight spots, so not to be overly competitive, but good for Hicksville. You know, I obviously think we do a great job preparing our students, and they always do a nice job there, so we're excited for those students to attend APT next year. I believe four of them are going to be juniors next year, and I think two are seniors that are being accepted into the program. Today, March 15th, we actually started our Women's Self-Defense Course today in our senior seminar class. I know Mr. Dave Blue hosts that event. It's actually an awesome event. It's the second year we've done this. Mr. Randy Moore out of Edgerton provides this opportunity. And we do two 80-minute sessions for each group of girls, and there's two groups of our girls that do this. And it's a great opportunity for our girls to learn some things, you know. It's about awareness, mostly awareness, but also some other opportunities of physically how to handle themselves when they're on their own and things like that. But the number one thing again is awareness. And the girls last year, excuse me, was it last year, which was it, or two years ago?
Two.
Two years ago, really enjoyed the course. They said they highly recommended it. Mr. Blue, of course, it's in his classroom, he highly recommended it, so it's something we're going to continue to do. Lastly, a senior trip update. We're looking to have a senior trip, and of course, typically it's the week before spring break, as we all know. And back in January, I spoke to everyone about, hey, let's move this back to May, to give us the most opportunity to have things open up because of the whole COVID-19 pandemic. I do have an itinerary that I will share with everyone at a later point, but I just want you to know that our number one goal is we want to be as safe as possible. Number two, those of you that remember the seniors last year, anything they missed out on, we want to make sure that, you know, moving forward, we're doing everything we can to provide what we can for our students. So our goal is to leave on Tuesday, May 4th, at 10:00 PM, and of course, go to Gatlinburg, Tennessee. There's going to be multiple opportunities to do outdoor activities, hiking, whitewater rafting, things of that nature. And of course, we will return on Saturday morning at roughly 5:00 AM on the 8th. Again, I have a rough draft itinerary that I can share, but again, just an update. And of course, I know parents are asking, because it's been kind of interesting, because, you know, we've talked about our participation in the senior trip being a little bit lower. In fact, I think the best participation we ever had might have been Mr. Crawl's, when he was an advisor, we all went to New York City. We had a large turnout, but most times it was like 20, 25% of kids. And so this COVID, I think, has had a positive impact on that. We have a lot of kids and parents saying, hey, where are we going? Are we going to have this? Because they see the value in being with their classmates and doing something like that as their last hurrah, you know, headed into commencement. Junior Senior Prom, that is scheduled for Saturday, May 1st. And again, like I said before, based on COVID protocol that we currently have, we're planning on having as normal a prom as possible. Now, the line came out on February 25th and said he would be releasing very, very soon, the requirements, regulations, recommendations, whatever you want to call them. Well, now it's March 15th, but nothing so far. I just asked everyone to be patient. We will have a prom. I'm not exactly sure what it's going to look like yet, but we're going to have a prom. Okay, so that is our goal. Outside of that, spring break will take place from Monday, March 29th through Friday, April 2nd. The four county Career Center Senior Awards Program will be May 25th. And as a reminder, because it called everybody, it caught everyone off-guard last month, commencement is Sunday, May 30th. Okay, that is Memorial Day weekend. That's the first time in a long while since I've been here since we don't Memorial Day. And I could tell you how far back we'd have to go, but keep that in mind.
1987.
What's that?
1987.
1987 is the answer.
[laughing]
Thank you.
So Jeff, what does commencement look like at this point?
Well, I'm basing it on events that are allowed to occur indoors. And based on that, as long as we do social distancing, and again, through the CDC school requirements, it's three feet, not six feet, wear masks, and we're up to 25% capacity indoor. I figured with our double-decker side of our bleachers, which holds roughly, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone in here, I think 1,100, 1,200. And we'll put as BD chairs three feet apart as possible on the floor. In fact, if every chair I get in there, I'm probably going to put in there. That way, if that 25%, let's say 1,600 or 1,700, we're looking at 400 tickets, and the goal is to get as many tickets per senior as possible.
So if you put, you know, the parents sitting together, you could slide those chairs together, but yeah, I mean...
Sure.
Technically, you could do that, yes.
I mean, in a way.
Groups of four. That's how we did it in coronation. You're learning all my tricks.
Yeah.
No. But our goal is to have a normal commencement and of course maximize participation.
Okay. I love the self-defense class. That's awesome. How many seniors do we have in APT now?
Current seniors?
Yeah.
I think currently, I think we have five seniors, Mr. Mike Blue.
I do have like...
Oh, we currently have five seniors in APT.
Yes.
That's awesome. Really. Okay. Mrs. Kaufman, you're up next.
On March 11th and 12th, we conducted our 2021-22 kindergarten registration. We had 54 students assessed, seven additional call-ins, and 17 current readiness students that will be transitioning into kindergarten next year. So right now, we have a total of 78 students.
Wow.
Which is pretty good for this time of the year.
That's good.
Next week, our third and fourth grade students will begin their ELA state test. We're testing our HVA students on Monday, and the rest of the gang will be tested on Tuesday and Thursday. And lastly, a congratulations to third-grade student Clarissa Brown for placing in the top five of a national competition. This company that sponsored the competition, they're called Skyworks III, it was a writing competition, was most impressed with her distinct voice and animated tone. And so we, along with her teacher, Mrs. Bussing, are just very, very proud of her for representing Hicksville so well.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Strohm.
Hello. This week, we are finishing up our second round of formal evaluations. It's been neat seeing on the other side and seeing all the neat lessons that our teachers create for our kids. We've also been preparing for our HVA students to take the state test. All of our HVA students are scheduled to either take the state test with their peers in their actual classrooms, or if they want to choose to be tested individually by a one-on-one proctor, we'll do that the week of April 5th. I'd like to highlight Mrs. Taylor, as she is starting her review competition now for students for the state test, what she calls March Mathness. Each day, her students compete as teams to see which team can be the champion. And her fun ways to review, along with her amazing teaching skills, continually puts our sixth-grade math students right up there with the highest achieving in the area with the state test. Our sixth-grade team and I are also prepping for the sixth-grade shake. We've been finalizing our judges for each round. I'd just like to give a big shout out to all the community members that volunteered their time to judge a shake for our staff and for our kids. That's pretty much it.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Countryman?
I met with...
I'm sorry, I skipped one. I don't have a four-county report currently, so...
I figured that's part of it.
[laughing]
I met with Beth Lewis. She's the preschool director for the ESC to discuss our programming in the new facility. She's excited about the direction we're going with that, and we are too. Three of the rooms will be, or three of the sessions, because we'll have two morning and two afternoon. So three of them will consist of typical students and then students that require some extra services. And then, one of the afternoon or morning session, undetermined at this point, will be just straight typical. So we're pretty sure we're going to be able to accommodate more than we have, although keep in mind, we did a waiver the last few years in our regular one and had the extra teachers in order to see if we really could fill two classrooms. So we can, we're confident we can, and the smaller number will be better in the long run. So that's why we obviously put them in the new building. We, I continue to meet weekly with the contractors as always, and everything with the building is running on schedule as planned. The weight room equipment's been ordered. Eric and John and I drove to Seville, Ohio last week and met with a sales representative and looked at furniture samples, which makes it easier to kind of pick that stuff out, where you can actually see it and try it and see what we think is going to be the best. And so we've done that, and I believe that requisition has been submitted as well. For that, it was a three-hour trip one way, but it was worth it to be able to see, see it. And that is under the budget that we had originally set as well, barely, but it's under budget. The majority of our employees received the COVID, their first COVID shot on Friday, February 26th, as you all know. And students were not here on that day, as it would have been very difficult to obtain enough subs in order to keep the day rolling with that many teachers going in and out and in and out. So that will happen again on Friday, April 9th, when they receive their second shot. There will be no students on that date either. And that is all I have.
Okay. Need a motion for minutes in financials?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph and Galen, thank you. Minutes from the regular board meeting on February 22nd, 2021. We also have the treasurer's consent agenda, cash reconciliation as of February 28th, 2021, financial statements for February of 2021, and approve the amended certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2021 as presented, total general fund resources of $14,461,511.93, and total resources for all funds of $25,543,328.13. Approve the amended fiscal 2021 permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of $11,857,031.4, and total appropriations for all funds of $21,310,663.27. Accept the following donations: $75 from the Ayers family for the athletic department in memory of Richard Ayers; $80 for the Clean family for the athletic department in memory of Richard Ayers; $125 from an anonymous donor for the STEAM in memory of Joe Overmeyer; $325.21 from Farmers and Merchant State Bank for student of the quarter; $500 from an anonymous donor for the scholarship in memory of Noah Carrickson; and $500 from the Weatherhead family for scholarship in memory of Francesca Weatherhead. Mike, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I don't. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Everything looked good in the reports. Somebody, okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Passes 5-0. Need a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move. I'll second.
Craig and Mindha? Recommend to approve an addendum to the school psychologist employment contract as attached. Roll call.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Methman?
Yes.
And Mr. Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Need another motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph, Galen. Recommend issuing a three-year contract to Mike Altman as middle school principal commencing August 1st, 2021, and ending July 31st, 2024. Mike, you've done a great job. We appreciate you. We...
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You've really, you stepped into a position that had big shoes to fill, and you have done an outstanding job.
Steph and Galen.
Any other comments? Okay. Roll call.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Another motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig and Mindha? Recommend issuing a five-year contract to Jeff Slattery as high school principal commencing August 1st, 2021, and ending July 31st, 2026. Sure you want to stay here that long? Five years, man?
Makes you feel all more fuzzy inside, so I could do.
Good.
I know where he lives, it'd be all right.
Jeff, as always, you do an outstanding job. You know, we try and tell the admin staff in general how much we appreciate you, but you really do go above and beyond, and we appreciate you. Roll call.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. All those motions pass 5-0. Oh, one more on the back. Need another motion?
I'll move. I'll move.
Galen, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Mindha, sorry, missed that. Recommend to approve Madison Stockman as a certified substitute for the 2021 school year. Roll call.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
Steph?
Second.
Galen, thank you. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2021 school year for Tanya Iden, co-freshman class advisor.
This also means that you're going to be doing a lot of work. I hope you know that, because that's what happens.
Roll call.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Abstain.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes four with one abstention. And then, a motion for services and agreements.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Craig and Galen. Recommend to approve a service agreement with Northwest Ohio Education Service Center per Ohio revised code. This agreement will begin on July 1st, 2021 and shall terminate on July 30th, 2022. Total projected cost is $506,796.06. Recommend to approve a memorandum of understanding by the Hicksville Education Association and the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. And a motion for other business?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mindha and Steph, thank you. Recommend to approve the following new and revised Board of Education bylaws and policies. I'm going to skip the numbers. Technical corrections, nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, equal oppor, equal employment opportunity. Section 405, for, I'm sorry, 404, 40, oh my goodness, 504 and 504A, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, anti-harassment, controversial issues, nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity, section 504 ADA, prohibition against discrimination based on disability, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, anti-harassment, nondiscrimination and equal employment opportunity, section 504 ADA, prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, anti-harassment, anti-harassment, cost principles, spending federal funds, investments in budget preparation, procurement of federal grants and funds, deposit of public funds, cash collection points, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, property inventory, accounting system for capital assets, protective facial coverings during pandemic epidemic events, food services and wellness. Lovely reading. I do have to say, I was happy with the change that we made with adding the male and female to the one panel. That was, that was good. I liked that. Otherwise, it was just a lot of small changes.
Little stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
Periods.
Yeah. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Do we have any old business?
I just want to bring up the growing God's Way. I don't even know what to call it, but that plan, just where are we at with that?
Remember, Extral?
Well, yeah, because he had sent me an email last month, I think.
I spoke with him today about that, and we'll pass something on the board agenda on April, simply stating that we're okay with participating in the after-school program that we spoke about here at the school, and that you are all okay with it. They want board approval, so...
I've seen it in the paper a lot recently.
Yeah.
Different schools.
Mm-hmm. And so just to clarify, this is an after-school program?
That's right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Jeff, do we have any athletic booster meetings coming up any time?
Um, I know all of it's been...
For a while.
I mean, technically, I'm not charged with athletic boosters, because I'm an administrator of the school, so that's kind of why I try to let other people kind of manipulate and maintain that.
Gotcha.
But it seems to be happening where if I don't call a meeting, there aren't meetings. So I apologize, but that's, we'll try to get something aligned, lined up. Because I know we're going to do a golf outing again, and that was kind of my baby last year. So I'll get some information out, so hopefully we can be maybe in April, and get that plan for August 1st, or whatever it is, that first Saturday in August is, and go from there. But I do know there's been kind of a transition to, because, you know, we can't say enough about Jack Shopp, you know, he's done, you know, for our athletic boosters forever. I mean, he's just been the man, but it's come to a point where he needs help, there needs to be some transitioning. And like we said before, COVID hit, and we were starting to get it going. And now that we're coming out of that, I think it's going to be a better opportunity to start growing that again in the right direction, making it a healthier athletic boosters for all our student athletes.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we have come to the point of our meeting that we do allow unannounced guests who'd like to address the board. So if you'd like to move up to the corner here and make sure and sign in, just one at a time, we just ask that you do state your name. Mike is taking notes up here, and per our procedures and rules, you are limited to four minutes. We don't really want to be here till 10 o'clock, no offense. So...
I'm just going to go ahead and stand here and take this off. I think I'm good six feet away from Jeff getting expelled. If you get a text...
I'm used to it, sorry.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. At the beginning of this school year, our opening day breakfast, which some of you board members were present, as well as many of our community members, we all came together to celebrate a new school year, to show pride for our district, to talk about the good things we have done and will do, continuing for our students, to show that we all want to work together, sort of like a team. To me, the most important aspects of a team are communication and building relationships, those things that build trust and commitment. It must be important to you, as well, as Mr. Countryman has made this his mantra for the year, building relationships. His opening day stat and then, excuse me, meeting was centered on building relationships within our district and especially with our kids. He has mentioned it many times this school year, in person and with the communications to the staff, just like a number of these printouts from emails that he's given. I want to tell you all this. I love it. In my opinion, this is, he is absolutely spot on, on this topic. This is the way to motivate staff and our students too. Doing this builds trust and all the willingness to go that extra yard. A common goal supports and benefits the whole, not just the one. Unfortunately, I know something in which started so promising has now stopped. Communication has broken down and relationships are being severed. Protocols are not being followed. But most importantly, trust is being lost. Recently, I've been part of a situation in which one of our staff members has, without any warning, been asked to give up something they are darned good at, and they love it. Why? No documentation nor reasons were given at that meeting. The administration in that room said, "We're blindsided by this." They didn't understand why this was happening. Then there was a follow-up meeting, in which administration said to me, "Yes, that staff member will keep their position." Great. I felt that's the way it should be. One month later, that staff member was called back in, and the decision was reversed. No. Nothing provided again at that meeting, except hearsay, and frankly, things that were said were disputed, they were inaccurate, and they were untrue. And that's where we're at now. We're in a negative situation that has ramifications that will go past this day. We all broke something, and I hope the board will find time to fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to echo Mr. Slattery's comments about the self-defense. That's a pretty good gig. It's a real good gig. And well worth it. So we appreciate the funding of that process. Now, I'd like to reemphasize and echo what Mr. Blue said. I will not be nearly as eloquent as he is, but the situation is incredibly disappointing to me, you know, at a professional level, as a 30-plus member person here in the athletic department on staff. I've been in multiple roles in the athletic department, and I've never seen anything like this that's going on. I guess I'd ask you guys to refer to my letter that I wrote to you pertaining to this. You know, I've got some real concerns about that, the whole process, and it is very, very disappointing. I'd be more than happy to discuss any of this with anybody at any time, and I just want to kind of say that much. But again, I don't know if anybody can say it much better than Mike Blue. It's, he said the word ramifications. Man, as a head coach here, as a coach here, man, there's some trust, there's a trust issue that has now developed. And I believe you might want to address some other head coaches about the trust issue that has now developed. And that's very, very concerning, because I think, I, we got a great gig. We got a great gig in this building. No, no, I go, how far are we going to go before we find another school, especially one our size, that has every head coach on staff? That's unbelievable.
That's unbelievable. And uh, that's pretty important. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Um, I am gonna say two things. One, regarding the athletic program, it has come to our attention that there are not good processes and procedures in place. And our athletic directors and our admin are working to rectify that. And second, personnel matters will not be discussed in public. I would think any employed person would not want their reasons for hiring, firing, promotion, demotion, any of that made public. I mean, that is a right of um, an individual to have those things to be held in confidence. Um, so we will not be addressing um, employment issues in public. And that is part of the reason why we go into an executive session, is so we can discuss those matters, because it is not a public matter. And I would think all employed people would appreciate that. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, that that discussion will not be held in, in public. We do appreciate um, all the input. We do appreciate people coming from the public and addressing their concerns to the board. You don't always have an opportunity to do that, so this is the place for that to happen. Um, so we appreciate you coming and showing support and um, addressing your concerns with us. Any other comments or discussion?
Absolutely, we do have that marked.
Okay. So we will be going into executive session. Um, it's six oh two now. We'll go in at six ten. We will not be making any um, decisions afterwards. And then we will be meeting again for our next meeting on Monday, April nineteenth at five thirty. So I do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna call Minda, and who said second?
Galen.
Galen, Minda and Galen. So again, at six ten. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, other, roll call.
Oh, sorry, roll call.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Motion approves five zero.